I've started our recording.
Good evening and welcome to the January 27th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. A meeting was held at 6:00 PM in the conference room at City Hall for clarification of the agenda. Bear with me, we're having some technical difficulties here. So the following is the official agenda of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Discussion and commission action will be limited to those items on the agenda. All citizens who wish to address the commission shall first be recognized by the chair and shall give his or her name and address for the record. If a citizen wishes to read documentation of any sort up to the commission, he or she shall first seek permission from the chair. There's a three-minute time limit. There is a three-minute time limit for presentations to the commission. Agenda item one is roll call. Aislinn, if you could please call the role and commission members, please state your name and whether or not you made a site visit and disclose any conflict of interest or expertise contact.
Shanda or Crystal Shanda?
I haven't here, I've not made any site visits, no conflict of interest or other communication.
Jill Kirkham?
Jill Kirkham, I made site visits and I have nothing else to disclose or other communication.
Jeff Moore?
My name's Jack Moore and I live in the Old Town District and I made site visits to Agenda Items Two and Three and I have nothing else to disclose.
Rich Phillips?
Rich Phillips, I was not able to make a site visit and I have no conflict of interests.
Shin Kyu-Roo?
My name is Shin Kyu-Roo, I live in the Highland area, I made a site visit to Agenda Item Number Two. I have nothing else to declare.
Samantha Stoddard?
Samantha Stoddard is here, I did not make a site visit and I have no conflict of interest.
Kaylee White?
My name is Kaylee White, I was unable to make the site visit to both Agenda Items, I have nothing further to report. Okay, and if I could ask that all attendees mute their microphones when they are not speaking, please. Thank you. So we'll continue on to Agenda Item Two and I would like to, sorry, it's approval of the minutes, so if we could look over the minutes from the last meeting?
We don't have minutes on this one, Kaylee.
We what?
We don't have minutes on this one.
Oh.
I was sick, I didn't get them. So we have just been?
No minutes were taken, no.
Okay. So no approval of the minutes for tonight. We will move that to the next meeting. So we'll go on to Agenda Item Two, which is our public hearing and annexation. The commission may wish, sorry. With the annexation, at this time has been set aside for the commission member to hear, the commission to hear comments from the public regarding a request by Bill Isley, represented by R M E S, to annex and zone approximately 8.65 acres of land near the east end of Vista Drive. The requested zoning is residential low density and if we could hear from the applicant at this time.
Yes, good evening, Madam Chairman, Commission Members, my name is Brady Smith with Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying, 600 East Oak Street, Pocatello, Idaho. Here tonight representing the applicant, Bill Isley, on this high terrace project. You guys may remember a few months ago, there was another annexation that came before you for what is going to be known as High Terrace Subdivision Division One. As we were working through some of those processes and working through some of the grading on that land that was annexed into the city, we, it became evident that to make the project long-term flow the way that that Bill wanted it to flow, we needed to annex some additional land to the south. And that is what is before you tonight for consideration. As you mentioned in your lead-up to this, we're asking for the annexation of the 8.65 acres. The entire project that were, the land that was purchased is actually 11.13 acres, but 2.48 of that is actually in the city already. So we're just asking for the additional 8.65 acres to be annexed in in addition to that, that land. Basically, just to give you a little lead-up to what's going to happen as, as things roll forward, if this is approved, we still plan to go forward with our subdivision for the High Terrace Division One that was before you a couple of months ago for annexation and then probably extend Center Street for more lots to the south in a short flat. So that will also kind of intrude into this area that, that we're asking for annexation, but the remainder of that part is going to still be some sort of a townhouse development, but that's under a more formal design process, so that won't be before you for a little bit down the road. But the reason we're trying to do four more lots to the south is to extend Center Street closer to Vista in the short term. I know that's a big concern that's been brought up and I'm sure there'll be more discussion on that as, you know, more formal plans come forward showing the actual nature of the roads and the connectivity that's going to happen. I know tonight we're just here concerning the annexation, but did want to give you a little heads up to that because you will be probably seeing that come forward in the months to come. We're asking for the RL designation, but that's because we are trying to go across the top of Center Street and keep that density on that rim a little bit less. We, it was mentioned, I think, in the clarification meeting that this is winter range area and we're aware of that, but I think by the fact that it is winter range, we're also allowed to have clustering, which we will definitely try to take advantage of for two reasons. The big one obviously is the open space and keeping the trees, you know, intact. We're, we're very aware of that and mindful of that and want to make sure that what we do with our clustering is the least amount of impact to those hillsides and the trees that are there, which also affects the deer habitat. So I think it kind of kills two birds with one stone there. So we will be definitely taking advantage of those clustering options as things roll forward. So be, be looking for that down the road. I guess the big objective for all this in, in the long-term scheme of things is to get Center Street connected, you know, in a short period of time. You know, obviously market and things like that are going to dictate some of that, but I know the developer is very willing and aware of that need to get connected and is looking to do as much as he can, you know, in the next year to two years to get that taking place. Whether that'll be a full connectivity of Center Street is hard to say, but we do anticipate that at very least there would be some sort of a fire access road for, you know, temporary purposes that would connect that up even within the next two years. So with that, you know, we're just asking that you consider this land for annexation and recommend approval to the city council and would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Are there any questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing no hands raised, can we have a presentation by staff, please?
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commission Members, Matthew Lewis, senior planner with the city. As already noted, Bill Isley of B Street Investment LLC, represented by Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying, has submitted an application to annex and zone 8.65 acres more or less of land located east and southeast of the recently annexed 7.5 acres of land at the east end of Vista Drive. Following a pre-application meeting with planning staff, the proposed zoning for the property is residential low density and concurrent comprehensive plan land use map designation of residential. The annexation request is in statutory compliance with Idaho State Code Section 50-22223 point AI as a category A annexation, which allows annexation to take place wherein all private landowners have consented to annexation. As proposed, the subject property is within the adopted area city impact and lies contiguous to the city limits at the westmost property line. The applicant, Bill Isley of B Street Investments LLC, is the property owner of the subject 8.65 acres. The proposed zoning of RL results in a transition from residential medium density to the east and residential estate to the south. This designation requires a minimum lot size of 7,500 square feet for a single-family home and 12,000 square feet for townhomes and two-family duplexes. Properties within the RE designation typically entail steeper terrain. In this case of the subject 8.65 acres, topography varies from 4 to 12% in grade. Land uses permitted in the RL is consistent with the surrounding residential development. Although zone RMS, all lots associated with the Tuscany Hills subdivisions along Vista and Ciana Drives extend, exceed the minimum required in the proposed RL zoning designation. The proposed residential density is compatible with the adjacent residencies to the east and south. A concern asked of the applicant from fire department officials at the January 5th 2021 Site Plan Review Committee meeting concerning timing of the extended proposed north-south roadway to Center Street resulted in a future in a future secondary emergency access. A memorandum has been provided by Captain Dean Bullock stating that the fire department and fire prevention officials will work with the developer based on his timeline. It should be noted that the subject parcel is located in a designated mild deer winter range. Therefore, any development will be subject to standards and requirements under Municipal Code Section 1704170, sensitive lands, sensitive land standards. Please, please go to page five for details as well as staff recommendation condition number six. There are numerous land use goals, objectives, and policies of the comprehensive plan which support annexation and the proposed zoning designation as outlined in the staff report of pages five and six. All property owners within a 300-foot radius of the land to be zoned or reza or annexed were notified of the public hearing in order that they may comment on the proposed annexation application and zoning concurrent plan map designation. Notice was also published in the Idaho State Journal and a sign was posted on the subject property. No written public comment has been received by staff. This concludes my presentation, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for staff at this time? If you do have a question, please raise your hand, I can call on you and we can continue the process from there. Okay, seeing no questions from the commission, I'd like to move on to public testimony. Please note that there will be a three-minute limit on public testimony. So we'll start off with testimony by those supporting the application. Yes?
I can't get my, there it is. I guess I'm too close. My name is Bill Isley, I S L E Y. And I'm the applicant here. I thought I'd just take a minute just to remind the commission. There's 100 acres of property on, in this project. The first phase, we had annexed, we submitted the plating information on. The second phase, as Brady pointed out, it was necessary because we couldn't effectively grade the first phase because it's on a side slope and cut it right on a property line. So we went ahead and exercised a little bit more of the option. What we're going to do is have a master plan for this whole 100 acres. There are several issues to work out. Our density is not the I've never said this before, density is not the driving factor behind this development. I live in this area, I've built three houses in the Tuscany Hills area. I'll die in this area and for years and decades, actually, I've wanted to see if we couldn't connect Center Street and Vista. And having the option, as long as I can work out the issues that are there with the city, we will get that done and get it done quickly. I'm not going to develop the side road areas until I get Center Street punched through. We may actually be able to do that within two years, maybe three years. Assuming that the city would allow us to do it as a gravel road so that it was at emergency traffic flow. This development will be very, very, very nice, it will not be expensive. I'm not going in there and build 100,000 or $200,000 lots and $700,000 houses. It will blend in with the other houses that have been built on that side of the mountain and the clustering concept gives us the ability to get what density we need without having to just cut the property into one acre or 100 by 125-foot lots. Many of the houses in there that approach anywhere near the ridgeline even have backyards. And there will not one cut or fill visible from the west side on this, on that, on that development. We will use an excavator to pull material back when we need to so that the natural terrain will go right into the, to the home. We'll use terracing, there's going to be literally hundreds of thousands of square feet of, of block terracing throughout the area, so there'll be a terrace and the natural vegetation. I'm, I'm just really excited about it. I would be there tonight, but I had to have my hip replaced yesterday and I always go to the meeting so that, you know, I can stand there and people can ask me questions. I find it easier than when you're on on a meeting in this manner, but I understand the necessity for it. I would answer any question on any subject that anybody wants to know.
Thank you. Okay, any questions?
Yes, with regards to your plan, so you said you're going to kind of build along the ridges first and then fill it out? Or I guess, is that kind of your plan was what you're, am I understanding you correctly?
Not quite, it's not on the ridges, it's Center Street. Center Street was designed by the city of Pocatello 45 years ago. They were going to put the road in, the water line and the sewer line because their development in Pocatello at that time was coming up center on the one end and Montevista on the other end. That fell apart a little bit, but they had to have a an easement for the water line because they needed to connect, connect the old Alameda water tank with the one at the top of center and then they also needed to shoot a water line down into Montevista to give that area two sources. The water would come from two sources. And, but Center Street, many, probably well more than 50% of Center Street or maybe even 70% is not even visible from the ridgeline. It's there are a couple places where it goes across it, but the vast majority of Center Street, it falls to the north of the ridgeline.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing no further questions, we will move on to testimony by those supporting the application. Testimony by those uncommitted on the application. And testimony by opponents to the application. Does the applicant have anything to add at this time?
No.
Okay. I declare the public hearing closed. And how does the commission wish to proceed with this? Is there any discussion? Commission members, Shen, do you have anything to add?
No, I think the, this is in alignment with, I guess, to share my opinion is with kind of the previous application, so I mean, the applicant is working in good faith to connect Center Street with Vista and that was what he shared with us during the last meeting, that, that is something that he wants to complete. That is also will help kind of a lot of the traffic concerns that was raised before, so I feel this is just a sequence to that. And I'm kind of assured that, relieved that the applicant is thinking about completing this connection within two, two to three years. Also, I think based on Carl's comments, oh, sorry, Matt's comments, in addition to the eight, eight conditions that's listed by the staff, we would add one more condition, which is addressing Captain Dean's, the fire captain's concern with, well, so maybe we can add that condition as the ninth. Some kind of, which the applicant also has kind of agreed upon, so. Those are my thoughts.
I still speak because that's not actually accurate. Don't want to mislead anyone.
Okay, so this time has been set aside for commission discussion.
If somebody on the commission wants to ask me a question, I can still answer their question.
Yes. Is there a question for the applicant, Shen?
You, you can, as the chair, you can open the hearing back up to ask or answer the question.
So do I, a motion to reopen the hearing?
It's only one question, I don't know that you'd go all the way through that, just have someone ask me the question, I'd answer it in about five seconds.
Sure, Bill, would you clarify for us?
Yes, I talked with the fire department. Not a condition of the fire department that the road get built in two years, that would be literally impossible to build it as a city street. We don't even have approval from the city of Pocatello for the master plan that allows the location of the streets and where they would be. The, it's been, like I said, 45 years, they've been building up both sides of this hill. I've owned the property for 13 months and I will certainly have it built as fast as it can be built and it will run as a gravel road on parts of it. Just as quickly as we can get the master plan approved, we'll go out and start putting that in because the gravel road for the emergency access is relatively inexpensive. And I think emergency access is as I can get it done.
Thank you.
Any other discussion between commission? And again, if I could have those not communicating or presenting at this time, have their microphones turned off? Okay, seeing no other discussion from commission members, I'd like to open it up for a motion or more discussion.
I'd like to make a motion. So I would motion to recommend approval of the application from B Street Investments LLC to annex the subject 8.65 acre parcel into the corporate boundaries of the city of Pocatello. The subject property shall be given a comprehensive plan land use map designation of residential and zoning designation of residential low with the commission finding that the application does meet the standards for approval under chapter 17.02 dot 110 of Pocatello Municipal Code with the conditions listed in the staff report and authorize the chair to sign the findings of fact and recommendation.
I'll send Samantha?
Oh, I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Aislinn, can you call the vote, please?
Rue?
Yes.
Stoddard?
Yes.
Shanda?
Yes.
Kirkham?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Phillips? Rich, I didn't hear you.
Yes.
Thank you. White?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, motion carries. And with that, we will move on to the next agenda item.
Thank you very much.
We would like to, so Agenda Item Three is the preliminary plat Cheyenne Crossing. So Robert and Rhonda K. Milan, represented by Ron Dykman, have submitted a preliminary plat application to subdivide approximately 3.77 acres of land into 22 residential lots. The proposed subdivision is along Cheyenne Avenue near the intersection of Cheyenne and Comanche Street. Would the applicant please come, or the representative please come forth?
Thank you, Madam Chair, this is Chris Street with HLE Inc., 800 West Judicial. Pleased to bring before the commission today this preliminary plat for Cheyenne Crossing. We're proposing those 22 residential lots, two of them which are non-buildable. That is going to be a nice infill project between Indian Meadows subdivisions and Indian Hills. We're proposing on extending Arapo Street and tying into Cheyenne Avenue with a full buildout of Arapo and then also completing the easterly side of Cheyenne Avenue with curb and gutter and sidewalk. The two non-buildable lots, one which is a storm retention lot and the other one is actually just a boundary line adjustment clarification. There's some occupation issues out there and Mr. Dykman wishes to clear those up with this little strip, he was going to deed it over to Mr. Merrill at some point in time and only develop up to the, the occupation line. Mr. Merrill at some point in time and only develop up to the, the occupation lines instead of plating all the way to his boundary line. There's a, just some clarifications on the development conditions by Mr. Merrill Quail, that the, that there are four lots that will be accessed by access easements or private shared access easements. They will also, those access easements will also contain this water and sewer utilities for those lots. And also on the north side, they will contain the stormwater retention line to get to the storm retention pond. Do we understand that there is a current stormwater pipe that runs along Cheyenne Avenue? And we were planning on replacing that, the curb and gutter and sidewalk, and then tying into the system that we don't remove during the buildout of Cheyenne Avenue. Thank you for considering this, and if you have any questions, I can try to answer those right now.
And do we have any questions for the applicant at this time? Seeing no questions, a presentation from staff, please.
Yeah, good evening, Madam Chair and members of the commission. My name is Carl Anderson, senior planner city of Pocatello for the record. As previously stated, yet before you for consideration a preliminary plat for the Cheyenne Crossing subdivision. This request has been submitted by Rhonda and Robert K. Milan. The applicant's representative listed on the application is Ron Dykman, and the engineer listed as Harper Levitt Engineering. The proposed subdivision is located adjacent to Cheyenne Avenue and Comanche Street. The proposal calls for the plating of three point seven seven acres, more or less, into twenty two lots, two of which are non-buildable. The property is owned residential medium density, single family. The remaining twenty lots are intended to be utilized for a townhome development for a total of ten townhouses with twenty units in total. The minimum lot size for single family dwellings in the RMS zone is five thousand square feet. And for a townhome, it is four thousand square feet. And the smallest buildable lot proposed is five thousand two hundred thirty five square feet. City staff has had the opportunity to review the proposal, and their comments are included in the application package. Staff has reviewed the application, finds the proposed Cheyenne Crossing subdivision is compliant with all standards of Pocatello Municipal Code, assuming compliance with the conditions listed in the staff report. And with that, I'll stand for questions.
Any questions from the commission to staff? Jack Moore, did you have anything to add?
None at this time.
Okay, any questions from Jill?
No.
Okay. Any discussion amongst commission? Okay, with discussion, question, Jack?
I was wondering if I could make a motion.
Absolutely.
I don't think he heard you.
I apologize. I accidentally forgot to turn my mic back on. I'd like to recommend approval of the application or approval of the preliminary flat application. Robert and Rhonda came Milan for the Cheyenne Crossing subdivision, finding the application does meet the standards for approval under chapter sixteen point two zero point zero five zero Pocatello Municipal Code. Finding the, the, it does meet the standards, so. And that does go with the staff recommendations with the final plat.
Joe?
I will second that motion. I'm going to call to have it up, please.
Moore?
Yes.
Kirkham?
Yes.
Shanda?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Rue?
Yes.
Stoddard?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries. With no other business, please let the minutes reflect that it's seven oh five. The meeting is closed. Commission members, will you please stay on the line as we have training following this meeting?